Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the Wednesday, May 15, 2013, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' Meeting. Commissioner Kokoski has the dog.
Aw, she's a good girl. She's about a year and a half old. It's a Jack Russell wire-haired terrier. She was found in Elyria, so if you're missing your dog, come down to the dog kennel and get her out, take her home. If you want to adopt her, she will be available tomorrow for adoption. She'll be spayed or neutered if she's not already. Most of her shots will be given to her. And you can also get some free training from one of our trainers in the county. So, come down to the Dog Pound, check us out. We have about thirty-two dogs to pick from if you're not into wire-haired terriers. Ooh, sorry.
Madam Clerk?
I will have some announcements by Solid Waste today at 9:45 unless you want to do them now.
Sure, let's start with them.
Okay.
Good Solid Waste, out of the way.
Mr. Keith Bailey.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Keith Bailey, Solid Waste. We have a few things to announce today. First of all, this weekend's Pride Day, May 18, and I'm going to turn it over to Sally Picore, and Sally's going to tell you a little bit about what our Pride Day activities are, and let you know what we've got going on Saturday.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Sally.
Good morning Sally.
As Mr. Bailey said, this Saturday, May 18, is our annual Pride Day event. It's run from nine in the morning until noon. Currently, we have over twenty-one hundred volunteers who have signed up in twenty-two communities to clean and beautify. According to today's weatherman, it could change, but according to today, Saturday is going to be mid-seventies and only a twenty percent chance of rain. So, it sounds like it's going to be a really great day for people to get out and plant, rake, do whatever they have to do in their communities to take pride and to make sure their communities are clean and green. And it's not too late for anyone who still wants to volunteer for Saturday. They can call the District Office and we'll be happy to put them in touch with the correct people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that about the usual amount of volunteers you get, or is that...
We usually have around two thousand.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And next is Alex Marks. Alex, who represents the Church of the Open Door and the Feltrix Foundation and the Garden Initiative that we were a part of the last three years. This time, it's going to be headquartered, one of the drop, the points is going to be the facility as the collection center. So, we're going to distribute gardens to the collection center this year. We'll be getting it set up on Friday. And Alex?
As Keith said, I'm Alex Marks. I represent a number of hats, but the, our partnership with Church of the Open Door and our distribution of gardens throughout the county is in its fourth year, actually. To date, we've distributed just over fifteen-hundred backyard gardens to inner-city residents throughout the county. They're four-by-four vegetable gardens, and we're promoting healthy eating, better nutrition, eating fresh produce, and reeducating the county and our individual residents about healthy eating. As Keith mentioned, Saturday, we're distributing, our target is distributing just about five-hundred more gardens throughout the county. This year, we're excited about being able to utilize the collection center. I believe the weatherman, but twenty percent chance of rain, still says a little indoor coverage is nice for us, so this will be a great partnership for us to be able to do that. So, I appreciate everybody that made that happen. We also work with United Way and Leadership Lorraine County on a Day of Caring project in South Lorraine, where we'll be doing street cleaning as well as assistance programs for El Centro, Haven Center, Locata's The Key, and hopefully the Free Clinic as well, providing some painting cleanup, mulching services, and general street cleanup as well. And I won't take the thunder away from the cab trailer, I think that we'll talk about in a little bit, but we hope to put that to good use as well.
Now, who's eligible to receive a garden?
Yeah, so our sign-ups for the gardens, unfortunately for this year, have closed because we put them all on a route already, but we're targeting the low-to-moderate income residents of the county, and we network through organizations, and it's always an ask that we do through organizations that are servicing that need currently, to reach out to their recipients, their clients, or consumers, as they might call them. So, we go out through food banks, community service organizations, social service organizations, to try to identify who would be interested in receiving a garden. There's no cost to them. It's all donation-driven through Open Door and a few private partners that we have. Open Door provides the vast majority of the volunteer labor, but it's open to any individual in the county that wants to come help out, so.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, with the actual sock gardens, actually, I participated in a couple of years, and it's great for kids to actually get involved, especially if they have a parent that doesn't have a green thumb, like myself. Where could they go to get the socks in order to get the garden, if somebody would want to purchase that?
Yeah, the, a lot of the garden centers carry them. Don Molds, specifically, both in Ridgeville, and Amherst carries them. Pandies has carried them for a couple of years. Most of the garden centers have them or can get them, if they're available to purchase. But I'm glad you brought up the kids, because our focus of the program is not just individual residents, but families as well. So, we're trying to educate the coming generations, and specifically the kids, to, you know, not only how to grow, but how to eat fresh food, and not something out of a can or out of a bag. And at the same time, it also builds a family unit, because it's something that parents and kids can work on together, and that's a lot of the feedback that we get, especially from single mothers and single fathers that have something that they can work together with their kids on and not sit in front of the TV.
Yeah, and you could actually taste the difference between a fresh grown strawberry and a store-bought strawberry, too. Now, did you actually have a class going on for kids? You look familiar. Did you do something at the college?
We, yeah, at the Children's Learning Center?
Yes.
Yeah, we do several programs at a couple of the schools, including the Children's Learning Center, for educational gardens within schools, within daycares, within childcare facilities. So, we put on educational programming like that as well. And I guess one last thing on that note, since you brought up healthy eating and nutrition and kids. We're looking to partner up and have already started to partner up with French Creek YMCA to offer, through their nutrition program, that same thing to the recipients of the garden this year, so that there's some ongoing opportunities for folks to continue learning about healthy eating, and the garden then just becomes a vehicle to do that.
Is there a website that you can go to to get more information on that?
Yeah, the program is called Family Garden Initiative, so familygardeninitiative.org is the website.
It's a great class. My son had a blast, so.
Good, it's always a pleasure for us, so.
Tom, I think I could kill a plant faster than you, though, because I have no green whatsoever.
Well, we have classes available.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I failed to message that Alex is part of our KB Board now. Keep Lorraine County Beautiful, and we have quite a board, and they've had quite a few ideas already, and we'll be leaning more ideas and getting them more out in the community to participate in our advance in the future. Without any further ado, Tiffany Barker will present CAB.
Good morning.
Good morning Tiffany.
As you may remember, last year, the district was awarded a $5,000 grant from Keep America Beautiful and the Lowe's Charitable Educational Foundation. With that money, Sally and I were able to put this new program together, and what we did was we utilized those funds to purchase a six-by-ten enclosed trailer, and we have it fully stocked with equipment that organizations such as Church of the Open Door or any other volunteer organization can use to do community cleanups. Two of the big issues that we, or obstacles, I should say, that we usually hear from is we don't have enough volunteers, or we don't have the proper equipment to do the cleanups. Well, we can't give you all the volunteers, but we've taken away one excuse, so we're hoping that this program is going to be a huge success in Lorraine County, and we're going to launch it this weekend with Pride Day. Mr. Cortez, can I get you to flip that switch so I can play the video? No, we don't have sound.
It's like a Star Trek movie right now Tiffany.
Remember that game Galaga?
Mm-hmm.
Asteroids. There we go.
Asteroids.
Asteroids, that's what it was.
In 2012, Keep America Beautiful and the Lowe's Charitable and Educational Foundation awarded Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District a $5,000 grant. The funds were used to create a unique way to give people the tools needed to clean up and beautify public areas in Lorraine County. The trailer is available free to any volunteer organization, school group, youth group, scout group, and even the county commissioners. The trailer is equipped with everything that we can need to help make Lorraine County a more beautiful place to live and work. A lawnmower, trimmer, leak blower, rakes, shovels, gardening tools, and even trash bags, and the stylish safety vest. There are a few rules. The trailer needs to be requested in writing and can be borrowed for up to seventy-two hours. You need to be at least twenty-five years old to find out our trailer, and at least twenty-one years old to operate the power equipment. The trailer needs to be picked up and returned to our collection center in Elyria. And don't forget to take before and after pictures. We would love to see the fruits of your hard work. To learn more about the cab trailer, call the District Office at 1-800-449-5463.
I have a question on that, though. Why do you have to be twenty-one to operate the equipment when you can be eighteen and you can handle an M-16?
No, we were just trying to think of safety issues.
Alright.
We have mystery assistance and development to sign up.
I mean, I can understand the twenty-five for the trailer, because that's how old you have to be in order to rent a car, unless you're going to pay additional fees. But, yeah, the twenty-one for the power equipment, that seems a little strange to me, but.
Jury's a very conservative attorney.
That was a great video. You had to come up and talk at the podium, but it was a great video, and you did a great job on picking the outside decorations, you know, the cab.
Thank you.
I love it, it looks great.
We'll hope that this is going to be one of many to come, so that every community will be...
We'll put the requests in writing. Ted and Lori go out and do the work, and I'll take the pictures.
You know what, just like Democrats and Republicans, we do all the work.
Thank you guys.
You set yourself up for that.
Yeah.
Great job, guys, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Under number, number-one Resolutions, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' Authorized Various Personnel Actions, as indicated on the summary sheet, for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you Commissioner, I do have a number of personnel issues that I'd like to discuss with the Board, potential hires at the collection center, Golden Acres, workforce development with our summer youth program, and also our grant to community development for summer work, and possibly ongoing labor negotiations. So, those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so it asks us to conclusion of a regular Board meeting today. We go into executive session, and we discuss those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approve and read the same in the County Commissioners' Meeting Minutes of May?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter an agreement with Wellington Cemetery to enroll in healthcare benefits program effective retroactive to May 1, 2013 through December 31, 2013.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, excuse me Jim, are they a political subdivision working for the city of Wellington, or what is Wellington Cemetery?
It consists of one person.
Oh, okay.
They're an eligible organization. They're considered a political subdivision, it's been vetted through the prosecutor's office. As you know, we take everybody.
Right.
That's what our consortium's about, is for these political jurisdictions that may not have other options that are cost-effective for them. We usually end up in the losing end of that battle with small groups, especially groups of one, but they're eligible, and we're recommending that we take them like we have everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Repeat a Resolution 13-139 adopted March 6, 2013, Section 6.2 Vacations and Section 6.4 Sick Leave in the Commissioners' Personnel Policy Manual. This is a housekeeping resolution to clarify these sections.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize inter-agency agreement with Workforce Development Agency for TANF Summer Youth Employment Program. This is effective retroactive to May 1 through September 13, 2013, now to exceed 350,000. Authorize director to execute amend for changes in procurement and content, and increase value on behalf of Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, one more question Jim, this is workforce development, that's part of our personnel today, and do we have this advertised?
Do we have, oh, you mean the collateral pieces that you and I talked about?
Yes.
I have some stuff in my folder, I haven't just gotten to it, I'll get to it today.
Okay.
The, now, we're going to run a program, but there'll be other programs around the county being run. There was an RFP for almost a million dollars from Department of Job and Family Services, so we have a chunk of this, and Boys and Girls Club will probably be running a similar program, and maybe some other nonprofits. I really haven't looked over the list yet to see who was awarded contracts, so there'll be plenty of opportunity. Key here to understand is that the youth that can go in this program have to be part of a family unit, or, given the definition of what youth is today, they could be independent, but they're receiving some kind of benefits?
Correct.
From the Department of Job and Family Services, and/or are WEAR Workforce Investment Act eligible for services. So, before anybody jumps out there and thinks that anybody can come in and apply, there's certain, some restrictions. I also am on the understanding that possibly, and, not possibly, if you're not directly receiving benefits from Department of Job and Family Services, but you are eligible to be in the free lunch program, perpusing lunch program at a school, that there's potential there for eligibility for the work program. So, we're getting a lot of information out pretty quickly.
This is sixteen to twenty-three, sixteen to twenty-four is the age group?
Well, it depends on which, what the target's going to be from each organization. WEAR dollars can go up to twenty-three.
So, we can direct them if they call in and ask, or this is posted, which direction they're supposed to go in?
Sure, they can, well, we'll direct them over to WDA and/or some of the other organizations that may be running a program under contract.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer, authorize the appropriation of a road right-of-way pursuant to apply Revise Code 163.05, finding of necessity and authorization to take possession and enter upon property for widening of Griswold Road, Elyria Township, City of Elyria.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize the posting of low limits on various bridges in the county.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
For war contracted barb, barbicus construction after earning the amount of $308,755.20 for the Little Grange Road resurfacing project. Nine bids were opened on May 7, this being the most responsive complying with specifications, and complete work on November 14, and will utilize American Railway Logistics, Inc. as subcontractor. Project will be paid eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent OPWC.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no additional comments, thank you.
Mr. Mannion?
I have nothing.
Commissioners' report.
Wow, that was quick. Well, if I'm extra nice today, it's because I spent all weekend in church this weekend, Saturday for a wedding and Sunday for my nephew's confirmation. It was a nice weekend for that. Yesterday, when Solid Waste people were here, I meant to mention it, they had a coloring contest for recycle, reduce, reuse and recycle, and I got to help pick the winners for the twelve months of the year for next year's calendar, and there was a lot of participants, kids from all different school districts, grades one through twelve, and they did such a great job. They're really talented artists out there, so hopefully more people will do that next year, and I had fun getting to pick the winner, helped getting to pick the winners. We're still doing the amnesty program this May for the dog licenses. If you didn't get your dog license, you can still get it without the penalty, and also those people that buy the heart-shaped tags, if you can zoom in on this howl, everybody that gets a heart-shaped tag will get this decal, it's a magnet for your car, and it says, "I support the Lorraine County Dog Kennel, buy your heart dog license today." And the dog, heart-shaped tags, for most of you know, that it goes for sick and injured animals, and also to give them their vaccinations on the day that they arrive at the kennel, so make sure you get your dog license, and please buy your heart-shaped tags. And I believe that's the end of my report. Yep?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it wasn't a real busy week. Team Lorraine County Executive Committee met Thursday morning to go over a person they had interviewed to be interim to oversee the agency while we go for a national search, working with Future Works through the foundations. Also, we had NOAC this week, Tom and I attended. I had Executive Committee at the beginning, we're going to start going over all the bylaws and redoing that. I've been asked to serve on that committee to rewrite those, it's been ten, twelve years. Then NOAC was pretty much uneventful, just normal paperwork and through. And I'd like to thank everyone, our Relay for Life Team out of the city of Lorraine, Lorraine Cancer Crusher's had their annual fundraiser, bachelor/bachelorette auction. We netted over $10,000. I would thank everybody who participated and showed up, it was a really nice event. I'd like to thank all the bachelors and bachelorettes who auctioned themselves off. It was a fun evening. Thank Alan Fee from Q104 for once again hosting it. It was a great evening. That's the end of my report.
Well, on Saturday, I attended the hundred-year anniversary of the YWCA. It was a great event, got to hear Reverend David Link speak, very inspirational, talking about the importance of giving second chances and looking at individuals in a different light. Great job by YWCA. Thank you for inviting us, and we're appreciative of the resolution that we had for them as well, our proclamation for them. And, other than that, it's pretty quiet, so.
Quiet is good.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to bring Bill up to talk about an issue in Amherst Township with the railroad companies. I spoke with trustee Abraham yesterday, and we know it can be difficult with railroad companies. And they've been going back and forth with the engineer, the trustees, and the railroad. Bill, can you give us some details of what's going on there?
Yeah, I just got involved in it yesterday, so I don't know a lot of the background, but I, the township Road Super Ten brought in an email from the railroad. There was a response to...
Excuse me, Bill, can you tell us which crossing we're talking about? I'm assuming this has to do with the crossing in Amherst Township?
No, no, it's a ditch.
Oh, a ditch issue, okay.
It's a Battenhouse ditch that runs northwest of the intersection of Oberlin Road and Stang Road.
Yep.
It causes, it's an undersized culvert under the railroad that causes flooding in Amherst Township at Oberlin Avenue-Stang Road area, that whole Battenhouse ditch. And Jim, I don't know if you can recall, they applied for a SWAC grant to clean part of that ditch, but we basically said that just can get the water there to that bottleneck quicker and cause more problems, so we didn't approve that application until something was done with the railroad, so.
Isn't that the discussion we had, though, to actually improve the entire ditch all the way through, is going to be an extreme amount of money, and we might want to go to bonding on?
That was that big job in Amherst Township?
Yes.
$100,000 was the number on it?
Yeah, it was going to be huge, and wasn't it?
Yeah, they were only doing phase one, and it was pretty huge even that, and that didn't even address the culvert under the railroad.
Right, it was about a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
It was over a hundred thousand. So, we basically wrote a letter to the railroad saying that they needed to replace the culvert under the railroad. And then the railroad responded back that they weren't going to replace it, but they would consider possibly supplementing it with boring in a larger, like a supplemental pipe. And so, we were going to ask Amherst Township to respond back to them, that we would be okay with that, as long as they bored twin pipes, you know, that would equate the size that we had recommended.
What's it need to be, Bill, what size?
It's a, it's an arch culvert, and I'm not sure of the size, it's like eleven-foot arch.
Yeah, it's a twelve-foot arch, they wanted eleven-foot diameter pipe in there.
So, they said the largest they could bore under the track was a seventy-two. So, we said that they could, you know, if they put twin seventy-twos, one on each side of the existing, then that would be enough to carry the flow. And so, Amherst Township was going to respond back to their email that our recommendation was to put twin seventy-two inches to supplement the existing culvert, and ask for them to assist us in the cost of that. And I don't know if we've gotten a response back, that was just a conversation I had yesterday afternoon with John Sevcek.
Yeah, I don't think that's got to the trustees. I had a coffee with Mr. Abraham around three o'clock yesterday, so he wasn't aware of that. But what they were looking for is basically to have the engineer kind of write up a resolution to the railroads, and then have us sign off on it, just in support, to encourage the railroads to actually put these two twin pipes in there.
You need a resolution for that?
Well, if you want, I could draft something up and bring it to the next meeting.
Well...
I mean, is it anything that we're going to...
Just supporting the township effort.
Yeah, basically, it's just a support. Yeah, we can, we can send a letter.
Yeah, can, just a letter from the Board, work on that, too?
Yeah, that's all we need, is a letter. Resolution is, not to do, resolutions are governing actions, this is just a letter of support.
It could be a letter jointly signed by our office and the Commissioners, something like that.
Well, we serve on the SWAC also, so we'd sign it as the County Commissioners and from the members of the Stormwater District.
You don't serve on the SWAC, you are the Stormwater District.
We serve the Stormwater District, we're both, so.
I could draft, pen up a letter, draft and send it over to you for your review.
Well, you know, when you deal with the railroads, they want you to justify everything, so I like to use your engineering background to go through and do the justification while you're proposing the two twin six-foot pipes going there. You may get an answer in two years.
Maybe three.
They're tough.
But they did find somebody that's been communicating with them, so that's half the battle.
Yeah.
Got to the right desk?
Yes. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Sure.
End of my report.
Tuesday, May twenty-first, eleven o'clock, we're supposed to have a land bank meeting? For correspondence?
What day are we supposed to have a land bank meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, eleven-thirty.
Eleven o'clock.
Do we need it?
That's what I'm trying to think here.
I would say so to plan what's going on for like June fourth. I've been working with Pat on it, for the one hundred and fiftieth home demolition and stuff.
All right, we'll see, we come up with an agenda.
Okay.
The, yeah, we haven't made, I haven't shared that. I think I loosely shared with Lori, I haven't talked to Tom yet about...
I know about it.
Yeah, the doing something for, you know, House one hundred and fifty.
Did we get an email?
Confirmation from the Attorney General, yeah?
As of this morning, it looks like it's been June fourth, one o'clock, he can make it.
We tried to make it June second, he had a conflict, so we're looking at June fourth. It'll be good to have the AG up. Our program is really, really running ahead of everybody else's, and they're very excited about coming up and joining the commissioners, the land bank, which is comprised mostly of the commissioners. And at that time, I'm going to put the touch on them for additional revenue for our land bank, so we can get some more money.
Madam Clerk?
For correspondence?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I'll make a motion, move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' general meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Giaga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that pass through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskyville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aliria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aliria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aliria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on post and not the office. As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LeGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LeGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LeGrange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LeGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.